Hello, everyone.
Hey Chuck.
Okay, I see Gary, I see Amanda, I see Bob, I see Ryan. Okay. Shawna, John. All right, I think we're ready to get going. Chris, if you want to fly the colors? Hello, everyone, would you please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Hello, everyone, you've tuned into the June 8th meeting of the Town of Canada Dago Planning Board. Let me take roll call, Brian Stachak.
I'm here.
Gary Humes.
Here.
Bob La Course.
Here.
Amanda Ben-Liken.
Yeah.
And we're also joined by John Rubatella, our secretary, and staff members, Chris Jensen, our Code Enforcement Officer, and Shawna Botzak, who is our town planner. And also on the line is our town engineer Lance Braybant, representing MRB.
Good evening.
Planning Board Attorney Chris Needler.
Thatler.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm just looking, do we have any first timers tonight? I don't think so. Well, I'm gonna forego the procedure as to how we conduct the meetings virtually, and all I would do if you are going to speak and you're not a member of the board or staff, please give us your name and your address and address the board when recognized. All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, I think I can account for everybody, I think everybody's here for a specific reason. So let's move on to testing and publishing legal notices, there were none because all we have this evening is continuation of existing public hearings, so there's no legal notices that were published in the Daily Messenger. And if it's everybody's liking, we'll move on to a continuation of a public hearing for Aura Solar. Representing John Ikey, owner of property at 2890 County Route 10. Aura Solar is seeking a special use permit and a single stage site plan approval for a proposed large-scale solar energy system. I will now reopen the hearing. And I think what we're doing is tonight, just going over some review letters that were submitted since our last meeting, I know Mr. Plant has submitted responses and also, I guess, Mr. Plant is also looking for any comments with questions that the board may have, because we are marking time until the expiration of the notice, the 30-day notice designating the planning board as the lead agency in the secret review, and that expires, I believe, June 21st. So, but I think it is beneficial to to talk about this application this evening, get some maybe items that were left hanging, resolved, and with that, Dave, I know I know you submitted some response letters. If you want to go over those, that would be helpful regarding the county and I think ECB and some other reviewing agencies that had taken a look at this. I think it would be helpful if you could do that at this time.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everybody. So yes, correct, we submitted last week a comment response letter for all comments that had been received up until the 20th of May, so that the planning board had our responses on each of the items brought up by the various entities that the chairman mentioned. So a couple of the items that were changed, start with the Town of Canada Dago Highway Superintendent Jim Fletcher had a number of comments on the landscaping and making sure that it was kept out of the waterline easement that runs along County Road 10. We were able to do that and move everything out of the area that Jim asked us to do. So that has been reflected in the updated site plan. And we show the easement and the waterline on the site plan that was revised and submitted with the cover letter. The ECB Environmental Conservation Board had a couple of comments on landscaping. And so we put some answers in there about landscaping proposed along the eastern side of the project site and why there may not have been some on the southeastern portion, which is really because there are a large number of very tall trees there currently. So we've called those out where those are currently located as existing 30-foot trees to remain. So that's been addressed. There are some questions about the DEC and Corps impacts to delineated wetlands on the west side of the project site. So we put some responses as far as what the permanent and temporary impacts are for both of those features. We are in the process, I think tomorrow, our 30-day clock with DEC will end to be able to submit the application for the individual water quality certification. So that should go in tomorrow or Wednesday or Thursday to DEC and also be submitted at the same time as a pre-construction notification to the Corps of Engineers so that we can get our coverage letter under the Nationwide Permit Program that I think Lance may have brought up in his letter that we received late last week, so that was included. There were some Ontario County Soil and Water Conservation District comments about soil and erosion, erosion sediment control, why compost filter sock was used versus silt fence. We proposed to use compost filter sock as is used in many projects here in Ontario County. So that has not changed, we still propose to use that. Locations of topsoil stockpile and concrete truck washout have been added on the plans, that was another comment from the Conservation District. And then last but not least, were some comments from the planning board from the last meeting. So we did provide some responses to those about, you know, wetland disturbance. What are the proposed future uses of the existing site buildings? Now, there's no change to those buildings, they will still be used by the landowner and access will be maintained off County Road 10 for him to use those buildings. And we've updated the site plans to include quantities for plantings. So those are now included. And the decommissioning plan has been updated, which I know we have other comments that we've received since from Lance, but there are a couple of changes in the decommissioning plan that was resubmitted that we made as requested by the planning board. So that, in a nutshell, is the summary of the five-page response letter that we sent in. And I'd be glad to answer any additional questions. Did receive the letter from MRB, I was out of town on Friday, but I did see it come in late on Friday. And so we'll be glad to discuss that during this meeting or with Lance later as far as what changes the board would like to see based on that comment letter.
Dave, while you're responding, and I know Bob La Course had sent an email with a couple of questions, and I think you responded. So would you go over those, both the questions and the responses?
Sure, yep.
Or Bob can do it.
Yeah, and I'll preface this, just, and Bob, feel free to jump in. Caroline from Aura, she's out tonight, she has a medical emergency, she was not able to join, but her engineers from the Aura provided the sound, the noise answers to Bob's comments on here, so I did provide those on Sunday afternoon, back to the planning board as far as noise levels for trackers. You know, what time of day and night, the panels reverse direction, you know, at sunset, basically, and how the panels move in a group versus, you know, they don't move in single rows, they all move in unison. But Mr. La Course, if I'd be happy to, if you have any additional questions, be happy to try and answer them.
No, just Chuck, are those all on record? I didn't see them, that's all.
I believe they were on the FTP site. If you want to get them into the record regarding the meeting, John, just note that Bob had sent an email, I think it was on 6-1 with questions, and there was a response on 6-6 from Dave. And do you need them on the record any more than that, Bob? We can serve you.
Yeah, I just, I just want to look at him, and I'll look at him while he continues then.
Well, this is going to be continued, this discussion, so this isn't the last, the last look.
Let me, let me look at him really quick.
Dave, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the FCP site identifies them as 6-7. Bob, for your record, but it's an email dated 6-6.
Thank you.
Lance, it was a very good review letter that your firm did, and if you want to go over some of the highlights, I think that would be appropriate this time.
Sure. As Mr. La Plant mentioned, I did provide a comment letter late Friday afternoon. I think for the most part, for the purview of the board, most of the project seems to be up to par with what we typically see on a site plan application of this magnitude. We did have some site plan comments, but more in the tense of completing the schedule, updating it in a manner that the itemized how the site was going to proceed. One of the bigger ticket items, I think that I would like to just get a little bit clarification on, and I think Mr. Plant highlighted a little bit earlier tonight as regarding the wetland delineation and the water quality certification, which we've been talking about for the last couple of meetings. I'm sorry, it's hard to hear. So, well, and delineation report was provided. My question to you, Dave, is whether or not that has been officially submitted to Army Corps and DEC for their review and interpretation? I don't know if you've received a determination letter from them or not, or if you're in the process of getting that.
Yep, and that's the item I mentioned where we'll be going in, the PCN slash JP will be going into both agencies tomorrow.
Perfect.
The new federal changes to the law, as you're, I'm sure you're aware, there's a new requirement for the pre-filing meeting request that has to go into the DEC, and then there's a 30-day clock that we have to wait for.
Right.
Both of those, while we're not technically required to submit a PCN to the Corps, because we are under a tenth of an acre of impacts, we are going to do so just so that we can get that written, you know, affirmation of coverage under the Nationwide Permit 51 for the project.
Perfect, that's all I was looking for, for the record, I appreciate you elaborating on that. So that would take care of the wetland aspect, that I know that there's been some comments back and forth on that. So ultimately, they'll determine whether or not the disturbance is identified on the plans as under the threshold, if it is, then the Nationwide Permit, as alluded, would be the coverage that they'd be seeking, which they would have a permit for. If for whatever reason the Corps determines that something further has to occur, then a further study would be done by the Corps of the Site, and then they would identify what the disturbance is, and if needed, additional permits would be required of that. That information would be forwarded back to you guys prior to upcoming board meeting because of the timeframe that was just identified.
Dave and Lance, oh, I'm sorry, while you're on that, what do you anticipate the timeframe to be to get that approval? And is it the kind of approval that would be needed prior to this board taking action on the application?
So on the board's approval, I'm, at this point, as you've identified earlier, I apologize, my hands are all over the place apparently. We are not in a position to take action tonight due to the secret coordination and the state legislative action requirements that we're under. Right, so tonight, after dialogue, we'll continue the application to a later meeting. At that point in time, if we've received enough information to allow the board to move forward through the seeker, then that would be what we'd be determining whether or not we can take action on the application that's before you. I believe that with their submission, that we should get some correspondence back from the Corps that would allow us to move forward. If we don't, then that would be the purview of the board to wait until we got that correspondence back that satisfies those impacts or that concerns related to those impacts.
Okay, does that sound agreeable to you, Dave?
Yeah, that would be fine, I think, I know the Corps is understaffed and over.
They are.
They have a lot of applications and they've taken a long time, they've gone past their statutory 45 days that they're technically given to act on applications. But that's kind of the timeframe we're looking at with them, it's 45 days. On the DEC front, with the individual water quality certification, they will not be able to issue their permit until you, as the lead agency, issues a negative declaration if you do that, because they need the seeker determination before they can issue a permit.
And for the record, I'm comfortable with the water quality aspect, I don't think there's a big issue there. I think it's more with the delineation that was provided.
Okay, Lance, I interrupted you, go ahead.
Oh, I apologize, I chuck on that, it was more just going through the Operation Maintenance Plan, which I believe is very well detailed. There's a couple of items that we're asking for clarification on and that we're typically used to seeing. And so that's where some of our questions were coming from in terms of how often things are going to be done. Example would be maintaining of the land, of the lawn, the type of spacing used for the tree plantings and location. We asked for that stuff to be a little bit clarified on the plans. And then under the decommissioning plan, we were asking for a cover page, just so that we had a date, who prepared what. And then ultimately, asking for a little additional, excuse me, information on the vegetation screening, and if it's going to be remaining, because sometimes what we've seen is that the landowner at the end of the project wants to retain that information. So we asked that notes be provided, that basically summarize and state that upon receipt of a request from the landowner, the planning board or the town has the right to review that, that request and determine whether or not they want to allow the trees or the berms or the roadways to remain on-site after decommissioning is to occur. There's a possibility that the planning board requires trees to be planted as part of the application, and then 30 years from now, you have a 30-year-old tree sitting on the site. It may make sense to keep it if the landowner wants. We require them to show that removal as part of the decommissioning plan, because it's got to be all-inclusive, bring the land back to its original state. But we do allow typically, upon request, the landowner to have the right to request to keep that if that's what they want with the approval from the town. So those are some of the additional questions that you see in our letter related to that.
Okay, thank you. Let me go to the board, see if there's any questions from anyone at this point in their review of the regulations and the plans and the application itself, any questions that come to mind that you'd like to bring before the board and the applicant?
I've got, I guess, one question. Before I get to that, I want to thank you for the additional details that I asked for last time in terms of the installation of the main stanchions into the ground and the equipment pad and some increase the landscaping, that was all done, I appreciate that. I think that all looks good. I guess my question is kind of a hypothetical, it's a hypothetical question. But I'm just curious as to if, if through the next several weeks here, we find that there is additional concerns in that wetlands area? And for those reasons, it's determined that it's beneficial not to install, I guess, though, that last, I'll call it, I don't know how many rows it is, eight, nine rows, whatever it is, eight or nine rows of arrays in that far western side, that little section there? And it's advisable not to install arrays in that area? Would the remaining arrays, would it produce the amount of power that would be beneficial and that would enable this to keep going forward? Or is that a kind of a non-starter?
Generally, I think it's, it would be a non-starter, because the utility has set aside a certain block of, you know, through the interconnection process of power that this company is committing to provide to the utility. So if that production level goes down, it's no longer, not just in terms of power, but also in terms of economics, the return is not, is not there for many of our clients to do something like that. But as I mentioned earlier, you know, generally, both the Buffalo District of the Corps of Engineers and the New York District generally don't consider solar panels as impacts if the panels are pile-driven into a wetland. We are taking a conservative approach that they are impacts and permitting it as such. But time and time again, the Corps of Engineers says, applying that, you know, by the way that you're installing the project and not discharging or displacing sediment into the wetland, it's really not an impact, but we're going the more conservative route. And because our impacts, if each of those footers are considered an impact, are below a tenth of an acre, we're under the threshold for receipt of that Nationwide Permit from the Corps. So it's more of a formality to go through the process and get the permit than them pushing back on us or requesting mitigation or anything like that for those impacts.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board?
This is Bob, if nobody else has anything. David, just to go over a couple of the responses, if we can there. You stated 80 decibels per tracker, how many trackers are going to be in the system?
Panels or tracker rows?
The answer was 80 decibels per tracker.
I'd have to get that number for you, but it's, you know, each row is going to have its own motor. So we have those rows shown on there, I just don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
So it would be that number times potentially 80 decibels, but you're saying only you're going to have no more, no less than eight decibels total? Right?
Yes, yep, 80.
But each one of those rows are going to create a little less than 80 decibels per. I just want to make sure, because it just seems like a lot in a row, to all be happening at the same time, just to be under 80, just for other record.
Yeah, and I don't think, and I'm not a sound engineer, but I don't think, I'm not, I'm not, I don't believe that the noise impact is cumulative. 80 is, 80 decibels is 80 decibels. You know, and certainly, as I mentioned, I know I mentioned this before, it'll be much lower than currently what is experienced several times a week with the racetrack right next door.
Right, David, I understand the racetrack, but in last week, you answered via an inverter, which is not the, not what I asked. That's why I asked the question on the letter, on the motor aspect of it. And this is going to happen every day, all day during the sunlight. So it's not just Friday night racing, Saturday night racing, it's every day, and I just put the community in the air, I just want to make sure it's known how much it's going to be.
Dave, if you can get that answer.
Bob and Dave, I guess both, if you look at, I'm just kind of making sure we understand what the right answer is here. I noticed on sheet C011, there are some general noise notes on that particular sheet. And it says there that proposed decibels for the specified tracker motor will be approximately 30 decibels at five feet. Instead.
Yeah, I think those might have been transverse, which we'll have to update. Usually, it's the inverter that's 30 decibels at five feet and 70 degrees. And the tracker motors at 69, which is less than 80. So I can definitely, I'll double-check that and make sure that it's consistent on the plans and get you a final answer when we address MRB's comments.
Thank you, David.
Yep.
Okay, Ryan, you had a couple of questions?
Yeah. David, in the response letter, I didn't see anything that addressed some of the issues I wanted to clarify for seeker determination pertaining to, I asked Caroline to maybe address the adder incentive that New York State was talking about through the community's solar strategies. And so it was just an issue that would dedicate a significant portion of the project to low to moderate income households. And that would help to kind of work through that seeker determination that we're going, and so I'd like to just kind of get that on the record again, to look for that. And then also, there was also a consideration by New York State to redesign the solar framework to pool all of the solar projects together and spread out all of the solar savings to all of the potential customers compared to an issue that we've explored in the past where one project, a solar project, may have X amount of customers tied to that project. And I just wanted an update to see if where this project's going to fit in to that New York State solar framework, does that make sense what I'm asking?
I think you mean the, the kind of the breaking down of the artificial walls of, you know, people downstate being able to subscribe to upstate community solar projects that are outside of their utility load zone.
Yeah, I think so, so in New York State, I know that this is one of the first projects for Aura, but in New York State, the projects that we've had in our town before, it was very confusing, confusing to understand that if you wanted to purchase that additional solar credits, I recognize and I'm familiar with the grid system and how all the electricity goes onto the grid. But a customer could purchase X amount of solar green energy, but it was tied to one specific project. And I thought that in the solar trainings that I was in recently, there was discussions about changing and redesigning that whole model, maybe through NYSERTA or whomever is in charge of that, to pool all of the solar projects together and spread out all of the source so that a customer would not be tied to one project. So I asked Aura to please kind of, just kind of, if you could explain, because that would help us with the seeker determination when it comes to the questions that are not, maybe not as technical, but maybe more social. And, and just to help understand the value that this project brings to the people in this community. So that's, I just want to get that on the record, those were the two things with pertaining to the seeker determination. And then my second issue kind of goes back to Lance's concerns, and certainly the ECB provided comments about the wetland. Now, David, was the wetland that you guys have on your site plan, is that the wetland from a map, or did anybody delineate the wetland specifically? Wetlands are determined by what, the soils?
Plants and hydrology.
Right. So did you guys delineate that, or was it just off of a map?
Yep, so we delineated them, Bergman did, and I think Lance or John brought it up on the screen here. We did a full wetland delineation on the project, these wetlands are not mapped by NWI or DEC, so we actually went out and did the delineation. And the majority of the wetlands are shown are inside the horse track that the landowner previously used. So when they built that berm up, it basically dammed up a lot of area and the water settled and created conditions that are, you know, favorable to wetland plant and soil development. So the map that's shown here is the actual mapped, you know, physically out, flagged the property, located the flags with GPS and put them on both this map and the site plan that's before the planning board.
That's great, well, I really appreciate hearing that, just to kind of reiterate for the record, many times people just adopt wetland that are on maps, and you guys actually went out and mapped it and put people on the ground, and I appreciate that, so thank you very much. That's all for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else on the board? All right, I went through the code just to make sure that the Is are dotted and Ts are crossed, that we addressed all the issues that had to be addressed. And we've talked about the statement of operations, and Dave, I think the last copy we have is dated March 10th. Is, did you say something about an update was prepared or is going to be prepared?
Statement of operations as far as the Operation Maintenance Plan?
Yes, yes. And I guess part of my concern there is, I know in previous array projects, it included emergency contacts. And again, I'm not sure if all that information is in the plan. You know, should there be an emergency, which fire company is contacted? EMTs, that kind of information. EMTs, that kind of information. Is it included? Do you recall?
We do have an operation and maintenance plan. I'm not sure if emergency services are included in that plan. I don't believe so. It's more of an operation and maintenance of the facility itself. But if, if necessary, and I don't know, I don't think Lance had comments on this, but we can certainly add it when we address his comments. You know, the, the emergency services items that you're, that you're referring to.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman and board, we did, we did have questions on who the share, you know, the stakeholders to be identified and who the reports would be going to. So the operation maintenance plan that was previously submitted will most certainly be required to be updated based on our letter. And it'll continue to be updated based on correspondence that they get throughout this process.
Prior to our approval, we have to be assured that the project meets the building fire code. And I assume that's a, an effort that Chris Jensen will do in his review. It, we have to comply that the project meets the objectives of the comp plan. I think we're in agreement that it does in terms of both zoning and the comprehensive plan itself, both current and proposed comp plans. Any signage that you intend to put out there? If it's a freestanding sign, it should be shown on the plan. Though I know Chris Jensen, you're going to say that that's not part of this application, but the signage would be a separate permit. But if you're intent to have a freestanding sign, at least maybe show where it's to be located on the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt on the signage, I know that a lot of times they put some warning signs on the outside of the fencing. I would ask that that be included on the plans.
Okay, good point. Is the project compatible with adjacent properties? I think knowing the surrounding neighbors and what uses they have, I think it, it is in compliance. You mentioned the decommissioning plan. It sounds like Dave, that's going to be updated to reflect some of the comments that, that Lance had. The construction schedule that I saw was dated February 10th. I assume that may have been updated also. If it has, that should be, that should be shown. I think we can confirm through the ag committee, there's no loss of valuable ag land as a result of this project, which we have to certify in our approval. Setbacks, I know you provided a zoning data sheet on the plan. But one thing you did not show was the lot coverage. And the code requires that no more than fifty percent of the lot be covered with any type of structure. To look at the plan, boy, right away you think, oh, man, that's more than fifty percent. But I, I think in relation to the scale, Chris Jensen was able to give me the numbers as to what the percentage of lot coverage will be taken up with the the array itself, which I think is a little over twenty-six percent. You do have the driveways and the utility pad. That'll also add to that percentage. But Dave, you should calculate what the lot coverage is and show that on the plan in relation to the maximum fifty percent.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay. And hopefully you're not over fifty percent. And we talked a little bit about security in terms of signage. And I, I think obviously it's going to be fenced, though there's, there's that issue. Anybody else have any other concerns as far as the code itself in terms of compliance issues that we should be pointing out to the applicant? I think that pretty well covers it from my perspective anyway.
If you could add a height to the panels on the one page with the detail?
I think there's a max height of ten feet, right?
Correct, yeah, we're about eight point nine, so we can add that definitely.
And what's your fence height?
Height, I want to say seven feet, so we meet National Electric Code. Eight foot, I'm sorry, which we show on the site plans, eight foot.
Okay, that, and Chris, I know this came up with other projects, solar projects. That's what the national code requires, but our own code regarding fence heights.
So we did modify our special use permit to allow for the higher than six foot fences because of the special use permit and stuff.
Okay, so we're covered. Someone? Someone wants to speak? I heard a hint? Nope, okay, I'm hearing things.
Mr. Euler?
Yes, for your sake.
Whoa, if we're, if we have, if we're, if we're coming near the end of the discussion, is it, is it okay if I just, if we ask town staff people like Chris or Shawna, if they may have any issues that they'd like to bring up that ORA should ask or address?
Sure, if they have any comments, I, hopefully the discussion was open to anyone on the board or staff. But if Shawna or Chris has any questions, concerns, or things they'd like to point out to the applicant?
Any future plans for battery storage units?
No, not at all.
Shawna, did you get many solar projects done in Yates County?
Not while I was there. I, I think this is a great project and it's very well done so far.
All right, well, I will ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak since this is a public hearing. I'm not sure if there's someone out there who would like to address the board. If, if there is, now's the time to speak. Okay. Hearing none, I think we're, we're looking at, I will close or continue the public hearing. I will look for a resolution to continue it. Lance, I know you had prepared a draft resolution. If you want to put that up, Chris will take it under advisement.
I don't have the draft resolution.
Okay. It's just a basic continuation. Lance, you want to describe what your resolution contained?
Yeah, so it's, it's just a continuation of the application because we continue the public hearing until tonight. We now have to continue it beyond tonight to allow the board and the applicant time to review and receive input on the application that's before you. That way, if there's any changes, the public has a right to comment on those changes. So the suggestion in my draft continuation resolution was to continue it to your July thirteenth board meeting due to the, the number of applications that you have on your next board meeting. However, it's up to you guys, the board, to determine whether or not you prefer it on your next board agenda, which would be June twenty-second or your July thirteenth board meeting.
I would prefer the thirteenth of July. I know Gary's not going to be at the next meeting. And I know he would, I would like to have Gary involved in the final decision in this application because of his expertise in this field. So if it's okay with everyone, let's continue it to the July thirteenth meeting. Someone want to make a motion of that effect?
I'll go ahead and make that motion to continue this until July thirteenth.
I have a motion in a second. Yeah, hopefully, David, by that time you'll have a little more, a better reading on the the wetland and the water quality submissions with the DEC and the Corps. And we can hopefully put this thing to bed. So I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, posed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
And I'm sorry, just a couple of quick questions on my end, Mr. Chairman, if you have a sec. Two items on Lance, on your memo that I just wanted to get some, some feedback from either you or from the board as far as the necessity are the visual impact assessment and the noise study, which are a little bit more intensive in terms of the, the work needed to be done. So I just wanted to get an understanding if that's something the board would like to require us to prepare for the next meeting. Or given the, the project's kind of remote location, you know, location in the vicinity of other solar projects in terms of visual impact and then noise impact, whether those studies will be necessary and if you want us to prepare those for that July thirteenth meeting.
Well, if you can do it, fine. If you can't, oh, we hope you can do it. You know, you give a month to do that. If you can't, at least some sort of detailed statement as to the the noise and the issues that we were, we're talking about.
And then last question. Deadline for having everything in, is that still going to be July seventh for that thirteenth meeting?
Chris, do you have the deadline schedule? Let's see if I have it here. July.
June, looks like June thirteenth meeting deadline is June ninth.
July, July, Sean.
July seventh.
All right, we can do July seventh. All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's move on to a site plan review being submitted by my agenda. Marathon Engineering, representing Dave, Daniel Gill, owner of property at forty-four ninety-five Davidson Landing Road Drive. Excuse me, he's seeking a single stage site plan approval for addition to a single family dwelling and associated improvements. This requires a ZBA action before we can act. The ZBA did take it up at its June first meeting and continued it. So no decision was made June first. So it will move on to their July, excuse me, their June meeting, which would then put this on our June twenty-second agenda, assuming that they get a positive response from the ZBA. So all that being said, I think, Ryan, we made a motion last, last meeting to continue it. So let's be consistent and get a motion to continue action on this particular application until the earliest our June twenty-second meeting.
Mr. Chairperson and board members, I respectfully request that we, if we're going to do another continuation to next month, the same meeting we just did because of the agenda on the twenty-second, is that fair? Everybody?
Well, you're right. We've got a pretty heavy agenda for June twenty-second. It, it has lightened up a little bit. I was going to go over that later.
If I may, I, I think, just for the record, I think one important factor here is, if I understand correctly, the reason why it was not on last month's ZBA agenda was there was some technical difficulties, if I may, I may be wrong with that. And therefore wasn't able to have a ZBA meeting, is that correct?
We had a ZBA meeting which failed because of Zoom issues. We had a ZBA meeting last week on the first where several projects were reviewed. Gill has additional information they just sent to us today via email.
Okay. There you go. That might be enough there. I just wanted to make sure that if the board was going to consider pushing a few further, we had some information that supported that. And I think with the, with the information you just mentioned, Chris, I support it.
What do you support, Lance? Can you be clear? I don't.
If they just submitted revised information today, then I, I feel like that's on board with what we have typically done in the past that, you know, you follow suit with timeframes to make sure that there's enough time for a review.
So you support going into July with, with this continuing?
If that's the board's decision, yeah, most certainly. I don't have a problem with that. You have a lot of applications on your June twenty-second board meeting. I just, I wanted to make sure that there, if the only reason we were delaying it was because of our agenda, then I don't know if that's, if that's appropriate, being the fact that it was technical difficulties that prevented them from moving forward before. But if they're just sending minutes, submitting new information as of today, then I don't have an issue with that.
The new information is some sketches and exhibits, no real change of plans. I would honestly say it should go on the next meeting in June.
Well, one of the issues I have is over the weekend I was looking, I didn't, I didn't even see a landscaping plan.
I definitely, yeah, I have a lot of concerns about landscaping. Particularly going to be around a fence around that pickleball court and things like that. You're not going to want to see that. You want to kind of block that a little bit from the lake.
Do you see a landscaping plan, Gary, over the weekend?
No, I did, I did not.
Yeah, either did I. So I don't know.
I saw one that was on the original plan. Well, there's an erosion and stabilization which has some, some trees on there, but I, I did not really see a. That, did you go look at the site? There's a landscaping and restoration plan, C five zero. I'm looking sheet C five zero. But I didn't, but, but I didn't think it was adequate. I didn't, I had some concerns about the landscaping.
I looked over the weekend at the revised five seventeen. I'm not looking at the website right now, but.
I revised one, didn't encompass that whole entire site plan, though. It only encompassed that one page.
Right, okay, then maybe that's what I'm referring to, Bob.
Yeah, so that's what I looked at it too. And it's like, well, this better just be split into the old site plan as a revised page.
It didn't, zoning board approvals and was continued, so it has to go to the next zoning board meeting.
I mean, heck, we don't even know if it's, I mean, we have no idea, so.
Well, as I said, it would be conditional upon the ZBA acting and approving it.
I'm going to kind of jump in here and agree with Ryan. I think we've got, we do have a full agenda, but I think let the zoning board do their thing. And then when they are finished, then it can get scheduled for our meeting. And since we don't know what's going to happen, we're just kind of assuming it's going to be approved. Is it what, next week that I got to meet?
Yeah.
I'd say, wait, wait till the fifteenth. If it gets approved, then it goes on the first meeting in July. I would say you guys go down, look at that property. I looked at it and there's a lot of landscaping to where that pickleball court is going to be. Already.
Well.
All right, I'm going to ask Chris, Chris, would there be any issue for us pushing this thing back another, another meeting regarding the applicant's rights to a fair and prompt hearing after the ZBA?
Absolutely not. I think that you're perfectly fine in July based on the schedule.
Okay, I just know we usually try to act on an application if it's, if it's co-tailed with a ZBA at the meeting after the ZBA approval, but, okay, let's do it.
I'll make, continue this application to the July thirteenth meeting of town planning board.
Okay, got a motion. Got a second?
Everyone.
Motion in a second. I, I'm going to accept Bob's second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, okay. All righty, we've been sitting here looking at Mr. Grove's plan for a application from Daniel Malloy, owner of property at thirty-five fifty-six Hickox Road. And Dan is seeking a single stage site plan approval to build a new home. I see Bill is on the call. Bill, you want to give us the background of what you're going to do?
All right, folks. So Dan Malloy owns two lots adjacent to each other here on Hickox Road. And a few years ago, he built a nice cabin on the north lot and wants to now build a cabin on the south lot. So that's what this plan represents. Currently vacant, old abandoned ag land, two point, two point two six acres. So there's nothing there, although I think he started putting in a driveway entrance just recently. And so the idea is to have a driveway come in to a little turnaround, put up a small house or, you know, cabin, cabin looking house. But I think it's going to be more conventional frame, but made look like a log cabin and a raised fill septic system on the backside, very similar to what the lot to the north of it is.
Okay, it's pretty simple. You've got, you got the paving between the road and the roadway?
Yep.
Good call. Board members, any issues?
I thought it was pretty straightforward. I just, I was. I thought it was pretty straightforward. I just, I was a little curious as to that, the little rain garden down there and the, is that the south side? I can't remember where it is, but on the picture below there, is, is that strategically placed based on where we think water is going to be flowing or something? It's kind of.
It's, it's more that it's out of the way for, for the septic system. We've got to keep it at, at least 20 feet away from the septic system. And it seemed like it was easier to, to run the downspout water that direction than to head it to the north. I guess we could have put it north of the septic, kind of mirrored it on the other side, but I don't think it's.
Primarily be from, you're going to run all the, the gutter downspouts to that rain garden? Is that what?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Which I think is a requirement. I hadn't had that on there at first, but then I think that the code requires that we're over, if we're over 20,000 square feet of disturbance in the Canada River watershed, that we have to have that. So.
Correct. You're correct, Bill.
All right. Good. Good. All right. That's, that's really the only thing. I, I thought it was pretty straightforward. Looks like a reasonable use of the, of the lot.
Okay, anybody else? You didn't go to any, any review and agency. Jim Fletcher did not comment on anything. No comments in ECB. There was an ag statement regarding the, the agricultural significance of the property. Other than that, it's pretty cut and dry. I know you're working with Tyler on the septic system. How far along are you on that, Bill?
Plans were submitted to the watershed inspector as well as state health department. So we're, we're waiting on state health department review and approval. But I don't anticipate any issues with that either.
We have our standard condition, I believe, in the resolution regarding the septic system.
Yeah, the town, town reviewed the plan. We didn't see anything. Pretty straightforward. I know everyone always does the soil and erosion control surety for stuff like silt fence and everything. But for a project this size, it's only like $200 in the process to review it, send it in front of the boards and everything. I mean, it's the, the planning board purview, whether or not they want to assign a surety for soil erosion. But it's a lot more hassle on a tiny project like this than it might be worth because it's one line of silt fence.
I propose that we waive that requirement of a surety.
Okay, we'll consider that in the resolution. We don't require any detailed landscaping at all for situations such as this, which is fine, but I'm sure Mr. Malloy will be doing, putting some bushes and shrubs in. I did notice the house to the north, that's, that is a log cabin, right, Bill?
It is. Yep. That was.
And it sits way up, doesn't it? I mean, it's almost out of the ground. Is that something?
The, both this house and that house are kind of, they're going to end up looking the same. And that's so they could have a walkout basement on the, the west side. And it's, it's just not sloped enough to, to accomplish that without either significant grading or raising the house up. So that's what they decided to do was raise the, the finished floor elevation so that they could accomplish the walkout on the backside without having to grade, you know, cut in a, a big flat area on the back.
Just, it looked, yeah, it looked strange and so, but I understand why they want to do it. Okay. Anybody else on the board?
Yeah, I have some comments, Chuck.
Sure.
Bill, I, first of all, for some reason, I really enjoy reading your plans. I don't know if it's the color you use. Honest to God. They are easy to read, easy to follow. And so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I, I really appreciated the rain garden notes and how you went step by step with those. That was really informative and I, I felt that that was really nice. I think this is cut and dry. I just wanted, for the record, Bill, that whenever we talk about rain gardens, some of the complaints we've heard from developers in the past is that if, if they go dry, they require maintenance to kind of keep them wet. And so if you could please just make sure that we put that, it may be, just let, let Mr. Malloy know that I'm sure with, if it's the Malloy, I know that he's familiar with this. But I just want to be consistent with all the applicants with rain gardens and just make sure that, you know, if they, if they do require moisture, that they, if we get a dry, a dry summer, that they may need to water the rain garden to keep those species alive.
Sure. Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding this application? If not, we're looking at a type two seeker. If someone would like to make a motion regarding the seeker and the site plan approval together. Chris, if you could put up the site plan approval resolution, I think there are a couple of conditions we want to modify.
That's another one I don't have. I wasn't forwarded. I apologize.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to bundle the seeker determination of non-significance, Lance, or no, it's type two?
Type two. Residential is type two. That's correct. And just for the record, the, the draft resolution that was forwarded to everyone had six conditions, your standard conditions. One was regarding timeframe to getting the plan signed. One was regarding the development permit. The third one is the one that I think the board is considering waiving. That's the requirement of the soil stabilization surety, as Chris alluded to. Number four was issuance of a building permit prior, excuse me, prior, prior to issuance of a building permit, approval from Canada River Lake Watershed Inspector and DOH of the, the raised bed system. Prior to signatures from the, all comments from the town code enforcement officer to be addressed. I don't believe there's any on record, Chris, but I know sometimes we put that on as a condition. And then number six, payment of a fee in a little set aside of parkland to be addressed. So those are the six.
My resolution is to bundle the seeker type two declaration, and then also the site plan approval with five conditions, which would be waiving the number three.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is the motion cleared, everyone? If so, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening. If you want to send all your plans to Ryan, he loves looking at you.
Every Saturday.
I don't, I don't know why, but they're just, they're spaced out well. Things are easy to read. It's, I don't know.
I agree.
They help me get, they help me get to sleep.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
This is purple. Yeah. I mean, it's nice.
All righty. We are done, the applications. Let's move right ahead to the approval of the minutes from our May 25th meeting. Submitted by John. Nice job, as always, John. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? I'll accept Amanda's motion, seconded by.
Gary.
Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Referrals from town board, there are none this evening, but it's starting to back up with a couple that we'll probably be seeing in the weeks and months to come regarding various code amendments, form-based code. I, Ryan, maybe you want to talk a little bit about the comp plan? Because I know you had requested that the comp plan be reviewed by the comp committee. And I think that's going to occur this week, right?
Yeah.
Next week, this week. Yeah.
This week. Yeah. Thanks, Mr. President. I think, John, yeah, we're going to get a message out to that. So, from the conversation last time and, you know, just trying to maintain, get back into the groove of the comp plan. So after discussions with the town manager and, and others, they're going, there's a, there's a conversation happening tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. as part of the citizens.
CIC.
Citizens Academy, Ryan.
Yes.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Yeah.
And so Doug is going to discuss that. That's open to the public. So I sent that. If, if anyone wants to forward that to anybody to join in on that, that was encouraged by town staff. And then the project team is going to meet, meeting again on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. to discuss the plan. I continue to go through it. I'm in my third review of the most recent draft. And so the, the major issues, it really, it reads really well. I think that through COVID and everything, a lot of the conversations were captured in the plan. A couple of issues that I, I brought, I, I have, but I want to make sure that, that they're accurate. I guess I'll save until Thursday where I could share them with you. My major concern process wise is that as part of the, as the planning board representative is that we originally went out and to the, we had, we held five meetings in 2019 in August. We went out to Cheshire, we went out to the airport, we went out to the Striker Farm, and then two meetings in the town board. We gather input, we came back to the town, drafted, did a lot of work, went out to many committees. And then according to page 16 of the comp plan, we're supposed to go back out to the communities and present our findings, gather input, and then bring it back and then take it to town board. So there's a little bit of process that's not absolutely consistent with the original intent of the comprehensive plan. And that could be because it's been so long with COVID, people are just exhausted. So I may bring that up on Thursday as one of my main concerns. And if anyone else has any concerns, please share them with me and I'll bring them to meeting Thursday. But I would encourage everybody, if you don't work and you don't have things to do during the day, that if you have availability tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., if you could please hop on and, and just try to become familiar with this plan. It's really important. It's required by New York State law in order for us to have zoning in the community. So it's just, it's really, I can answer questions if you have any, but I don't really have much more of an update than that, Mr. President.
Okay. Wasn't there a second meeting also, Ryan, that was going to be held regarding the comp plan to the community in general? I know there's a public hearing coming up eventually, but I thought there was two meetings, the, the academy, and then there was another meeting. Shawna, do you have the information?
No, I only have the information on the two meetings that Ryan referenced.
Oh, okay. That's what I meant. Yeah, the two meetings. Yeah, there's the academy.
The academy, and then the, and then the team meeting on Thursday at 10.
Thursday. Okay, got you.
This Thursday.
As far as the process with the board, we will be asked to give a formal recommendation on the comp plan at some point, once the public hearing is set by the town board. So.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah, I think when they set a public hearing, they also ask that, I think, I think it's required that the planning board, because ultimately, if I recall, it's the planning boards charge to prepare, endorse the comprehensive plan. So, so I, I'm assuming it's going to be circulated to all boards and agencies for their comments for either comments prior to the public hearing or be considered as part of the public hearing.
I, those are, those are some of the questions I've been trying to explore. And, and I don't feel I have a very good sense of that. So I, I can't respond, I can't confirm or deny that.
Okay. Well, I will make, I will check on that as chairman of this body that.
Great.
That we get our kick at the can, so to speak, in terms of a formal review at a public meeting of, one of our meetings. Okay. But it will also, as I said, there are other things in the pipeline. There's the form-based code. The conservation subdivision is, is percolating, a new conservation subdivision regs. We also have, what's the other ones we're working on?
Ridge lines.
Oh, the ridge lines, yes. The ridge line and view shed guidelines. So these are all things that we'll probably be seeing mid to late summer, once the ordinance committee has pushed them out of their purview. Okay. There are no letter credits. Anybody else have any other business? If not, looking ahead to the 22nd, as we mentioned, it's going to be a fairly heavy meeting. Gary, I know you're not going to be here. And Ryan is, that's primary election day. Is that going to be an issue for you at all? You'll be able to attend that evening? No problem?
I'm sorry, are you speaking to me, Chuck?
Yeah, yeah. I'm saying that's primary election day and I, I want to make sure that you'll be available that evening.
My, my priority is the planning board. You bet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make sure we have a four people at least.
Hey Chuck, this is Bob. I, I may be able to start that meeting, but may not be able to finish that.
The 22nd?
Yeah.
If we go beyond midnight, you got to, you got to bag off, right?
I'm going to be in Denver, but I'm going to still try to get on for.
Okay. All right. Don't forget the time change.
Yep.
We do have one application that's been put on hold. It's CPN 21050 from Venezia, representing Corey Westbrook. They had asked that, that be put on hold. So that'll come off the agenda for the 22nd. But all the others are still on. With the Marathon Morrell SR21 and Parish Street Extension subdivision, all we'll be doing that evening is voting of our intent to be the lead agency on the seeker. So that, that, that's the only action that would occur that night. And, but there are a lot of other issues, including the, the 20 townhouse units that are built above grade in section 9B over in Liquid Meadows. So that's it. So I'll let you go this evening, unless somebody else has something else to bring up. Okay, everyone will definitely be doing, doing Zoom on the 22nd because of the town hall being occupied for the primary election. And I guess, I guess, just saw a squirrel jump off our patio. I guess that Doug is still working on trying to get us all together in person. I can't look out the window and run a meeting. So Doug's trying to get us all together. So at some point, we'll be able to shake hands and hopefully be able to recognize each other again. And that's not in the too distant future. So do I have a motion, Ryan?
Motion to adjourn this awesome meeting at 7:07 p.m. Good meeting, everybody.
Again.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I'll second.
Bob did.
All in favor? Aye. All right, everyone. Be good. Thanks.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Shawna.